Work session, our group.
I think it's me. Our original, uh, Barbara. Recommendation.
Hi, we do have questions. Anybody? How's those concerned? Anybody concerned about having to read 622? Do our council candidates all know whether or not?
Say.
There are 622 two favorite plans. Ready?
Jump right in. Keep the ground running.
All right. Let's jump right in now, starting with library district. Sitting in for Pat Duke.
Hello.
You got my mic.
I'm Shasta Barnes. I'm the operations manager at the Wilsonville Library and I am here on behalf of Pat Duke. I'm here to talk about the proposed amendment to the intergovernmental agreement for the Clackamas County Library District. So I wanted to come to the work session just to give a quick overview of the amendment and then serve as a resource in case anybody had any questions. So I'll just jump into the overview.
Yeah, right on.
In 2009, when the library district was formed, the plan was for Oak Lodge to turn over its operations to the city of Gladstone. City of Gladstone was tasked with building a new library that would serve the populations of Oak Lodge, Library Service District, and Gladstone. And once that library was completed, those two service districts would be combined into one. But things did not go as planned and ultimately the city of Gladstone brought a lawsuit against the county. They did reach a settlement last fall and the amendment before you today is a product of that settlement agreement. The four changes to the original IGA are, first, that it's the city of Gladstone will be getting out of the library business and by that I mean the county will build and operate two libraries, one for the Gladstone Service District and one for the Oak Lodge Service District. Two, those library service districts will not be combined, they'll remain as they are, two separate districts. Three, that any money that was supposed to go to the city of Gladstone for the purpose of building a new library will now be retained by the county for the same purpose. And four, that the county will now act as a library city for the Oak Lodge service area. None of these changes have any impact on services or materials or revenue for the Wes- or Wilsonville Library. However, in order for the county to proceed, two-thirds of the member cities must approve this amendment. Does anybody have any questions?
So it does seem kind of odd for us to be asked on this, but it's only because we're a signator to the intergovernmental agreement that originally created the whole...
That's right, yes.
Right?
Yep.
Have any of the member cities raised concerns about the county operating libraries for some cities but not operating libraries for other cities?
Not that I am aware of. I have Greg Williams here from the county who may also be a resource for some of these questions.
I believe this is on consent, so if you have questions, now's the right time. Maybe you could come up and answer Clackamas County questions?
No. Push the button on your mic there so you're live and introduce yourself, please.
Good. Good afternoon, everyone. I apologize for not getting busy. My name is Greg Williams. I am the former library network manager at Clackamas County and the newly appointed deputy director of business and community services, so I'm happy to provide some answers. Your question was whether or not any other library cities had expressed a concern about the county operating another...
Functioning, you know, operating libraries for some cities but not operating other cities' libraries where those cities do it themselves, you know?
Thus far, we have not received any official feedback from the cities. We've had four cities pass the amendment already have signed on. I believe the staff report for the Canby Public Library indicates that their library board had a question along those lines and I was not involved in those discussions with the Canby library board.
Okay, so you're not directly knowledgeable of any such discussion?
Not yet, but we do plan to go to the Canby, we do plan to go to the Canby city council meeting to answer any questions that may come up.
Okay.
When you say Oak Lodge, are we talking Oak Grove or is that a separate place or what's happened to Oak Grove?
So, yes, the Oak Lodge Library, the Oak Lodge name is a combination of both the Oak Grove and the Jennings Lodge areas and so they kind of combine those.
Oh, they call those...
Yeah, they call, they call the library service area, oh, the library Oak Grove. So there is another process going on with the county right now. We are looking at, there's a task force forming that's looking at the Concord Elementary School property as a possible location for a future library.
So this library used to be in a strip mall, right?
Correct, still is. The Oak Lodge Library, yes, it's in a leased facility in a, in a strip mall which is not sufficient to provide the services that our library...
And then it's Jennings Lodge, Oak Grove, and Oak Lodge, whatever it is. I guess Oak Lodge is a combination of Jennings Lodge and Oak Grove, all unincorporated.
Correct, yes. So the entire Oak Lodge service area.
There's no city there.
Correct.
I mean, just, yes, but it, if it were a city, it would be the largest city in Clackamas County. It is over 40,000 people in population, larger than Oregon City or Lake Oswego, who are number one and number two.
Yes.
Oswego, Oregon City.
Yes.
Oak Grove is, even without Jennings Lodge, is bigger than the biggest city in Clackamas County and it's being carried by the county. This is unfortunate. Anyway, just my comment.
Other comments?
Do not.
Counselor Starr?
Well, thanks for just making that comment and hanging it out there.
It is fair to the other cities.
Well, that's what I was just gonna ask. If that is the case, will that drain some cash reserves that, I mean, because you said it won't negatively affect us financially, but I'm just kinda, just validating that. So, that's correct. It won't hurt the rest of the network to...
Doesn't do anything to our share. That is correct.
Okay.
Correct. The formula, the formula by which distributions are made is codified within the IGA and these amendments that we're requesting make no changes whatsoever to either the formula, the inputs to the formula, or the service areas of any library service provider. It has no material impact on the distributions or the service area population of any other library city.
Okay.
Just, well, let me just follow that up. So as a formula, if it's a percentage, it could still go lower.
So is the net dollar amount going to be exactly the same? Is that what you're saying?
So the formula is based on two components. I don't have my binder with me. The formula is based on two components. One is the assessed value of properties within the city limits of the library service area. And so as, as those values fluctuate, that portion of the formula could return different dollars back on that. The other portion, the other component of the formula is the relative percentage of unincorporated population within everybody's service area. So again, since the service area boundaries are not changing, there is no change to the, other than natural population changes in that unincorporated residence. So when the census, you know, when the 2020 census comes around, there'll be some recalculations that are done with that.
That'll just be what it is.
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
So what is the population of Gladstone?
Oh, gosh.
Or I could Google it, I guess.
Like 13?
That sounds about right. I am, I am always hesitant to answer just off the top of my head.
It was landlocked, so it hasn't grown in a while.
So are these two comparable sized libraries or I'm presuming one will be four times as large as the other?
Correct. So when, when the settlement agreement was negotiated between the county and the city of Gladstone, they, they looked at general service area populations and the proportion of residents within each. And while there are no exact square footages yet, the estimates are approximately a 19,000 square foot facility for the Oak Lodge, for the, the Oak Lodge service area with a approximately 6,000 square foot facility for the residents of Gladstone. And as part of the settlement agreement, the city of Gladstone has provided the parcel of land on which that, that Gladstone Library will go.
About 12,000, I'd say.
Yeah, well, Gladstone's had its own library, so...
Yes.
It's been a city for longer than us.
Minimal effect on us then, probably?
Zero. On, in terms of the formula, it doesn't change anything.
Formula doesn't change the outcome, or the, the numbers going in might change a little, so the numbers coming out from natural growth and changes and Happy Valley's annexation of 1,000 acres of land and lots of little things.
Well, yeah, but that's not to do with this issue.
Yeah, right.
And our assessed value continues to climb, as you know.
Right, right. Growth, natural growth, right. Counselor Ackerman?
The inner library loan would remain the same, correct? Because it's all still under the same library district?
Correct, yes. Every library within the library district is a, has a commitment to cooperate and to provide services to everybody and we do that very well.
Great, thank you.
All right. If that works for everybody, we can go on to the next thing. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Bus purchase contract, Mr. Simington.
Good evening. Scott Simington, Fleet Services Manager of the city. This is just to seek council approval to enter into a contract with Shecky Northwest Sales to purchase three CNG cutaway bus that will be replacing old diesels. It's a pretty straightforward 80/20 federal split, as we normally do.
Also on consent?
Yes.
And we did not go with the low bid?
We did not.
And there's findings to back that up, so you might want to explain why we did not do that?
Yes, the, the bid spec asked for a 21 passenger bus and the, the low bid offered an 18 passenger bus at, I think it was $7,000 per vehicle less. And after talking with operations, they felt like the 21 passenger was a necessity, so that is, that is why we selected that. It was a best value procurement, so we're able to take less than, not have to take low bid.
So their bid was non-responsive?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And we're going with CNG, not diesel?
Yes.
Thanks to our new compressed station.
Which, I should mention, this, this contract allows us the option of three more buses in the following year. We have more federal money to do that and this will take us to seven CNG buses, which will pretty much put us at the limit of what we can do. So we're gonna be adding larger compressors, so I'll be back to talk about that at another time, but...
You just limit what we can do from the fueling standpoint?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe you could clarify just what was cut away on these buses?
Well, it's, yeah, the, the back half of the van was cut away.
Oh, okay, okay.
The, the nose of a van with a bus body in the back, it's an industry term, they call them cutaways.
So it's only two wheels?
Just wasn't sure everyone understood.
What we cut off.
And, and what kind of use or what kind of life we get out of the buses we're replacing and what kind of life do we expect out of this kind of vehicle?
The buses we're replacing are 2004, 2005, and one 2010. All three are diesel. These are assigned a seven-year life by the FTA. We tend to run these anywhere between 10 and 15 years.
And longevity on CNG, any different than diesels or...
We've been using the CNG since 2011 and engine longevity is better than the diesels. With the emissions equipment that's been added to diesels, they, they don't last as well as they once did, at least in our application. We have, our original CNG buses have still not had any, any engine repairs done, just the occasional fuel pressure regulator.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've held up well.
All right, it's on consent, so any questions, now's the time. Looks like we're good. Thank you very much. Integrated Pest Management Plan.
Need to grab one more chair, four.
Rappel Blankenship Kerber consort here.
Share a mic. What's that?
DK extension.
With the Q and A.
Oh, no, so DK, because that was the latest one.
Yeah, I took the one that I think this had at Todd's, I think it was, which was based on yours.
Okay. How long ago? Guess we'll find out.
All right, sorry. Well, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Kerry Rappel, Natural Resources Manager, and with me here tonight are Delora Kerber, Public Works Director, and Todd Blankenship, Park Supervisor. So what we'd like to do is give you basically an introduction, I guess a little bit of an update, because we were here once before, about the city's Integrated Pest Management Plan, which is our first opportunity to have a plan that addresses our citywide functions. So this includes facilities, parks, natural areas, anything that the city might have responsibility in terms of maintaining those areas and addressing pests. So as far as an outline, we're just gonna give you some information on what an IPM is, Integrated Pest Management, and we'll be using that acronym a lot, IPM. Why did we do the plan? What was the motivation behind that? How we developed the plan? And then basically, elements of that plan that are embedded within it as far as practices and some of the process that comes along with that. So, so what is, what is IPM? Really, it's a way of looking at the management of pests from a very diverse and kind of systematic approach where you're looking first and foremost at what are called cultural practices and those can vary quite a bit. They could be everything from, like, we've used goats in the past to try to control invasive plant species, but it could be the way that you mow an area, how you treat the turf that you have in terms of fertilizing and nutrients, the irrigation system that you use. So it's, it's pretty broad in terms of what that means, but the objective there is to use these cultural practices or mechanical practices in a way where you can avoid the use of chemical control products. And so ultimately, that's what we're trying to achieve with this plan, is to find these techniques or practices that, you know, are done on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly basis, yearly basis, and to use those in such a way where those are our primary practices that we use. We can also look at biological control options, but to my memory, I think we've only used that once. We used some, I believe it was ladybugs probably, yeah. And there can be some issues certainly associated with biological controls, some things that can happen that might be concerning, you know, if they get out of control in terms of introducing a species like that. So we tend not to go to that as our first practice and look at these other ones that I mentioned. But then there's this, this idea of action thresholds, which we'll explain a little bit more in detail. But basically, that's where a pest exceeds a certain threshold and it may be necessary at that point in time to use a chemical control product. That might be the only way that we can effectively address it. We're dealing just recently with a situation out in Vilbois where we have a problem with what's called Japanese knotweed. It's a very invasive plant and we're having to use a chemical control product on that because we have to act very fastly. It's actually in the area where we're going to have one of the new Vilbois regional parks. And so they're gonna be starting work out there where they're moving dirt around and we cannot have this stuff moved around. It would, it would spread everywhere. So, so sometimes we have to act very quickly in terms of a rapid response and deal with it in another way. So why an IPM plan? One of the initiatives that we've had, you know, that you're aware of, is the Bee Stewards Initiative. And as part of that, we looked at the development of an Integrated Pest Management Plan, well, that's citywide. And then as a complement to that, when we became Bee City USA in August of 2017, that designation also requires that you use Integrated Pest Management. So that was another incentive there certainly to develop this plan. And they're really just the best management practices. I mean, we're doing the citywide plan, but certainly we've been utilizing these same practices for a long time in terms of how we address our sports fields or our natural areas or our facilities. And so really what this does is kind of brings all that information, this plan, into one document and guides the process in terms of how anybody would apply this. So how did we develop the plan? We have a committee that was formed and the three of us here basically are the leads for that committee, but then we also had key field staff that was involved from both Public Works and the Parks and Recreation Department. And we, we started this process almost two years ago. So we spent a lot of time talking through issues, looking at the development of the plan, discussing how this should take place in terms of how we put it together. But we also had the opportunity to work with the Northwest Center for Alternatives to Pesticides, who's one of our partners with Bee Stewards. And, excuse me, they provided quite a bit of information that ended up in this plan. So we had a number of meetings with them, with their staff person, and then Envirologic Resources was a company that developed a plan that we have for an IPM plan for Memorial Park. And so this plan kind of merged in the end some information that we had from NCAP, input from staff, and then also the Memorial Park plan. We also had a meeting with the Lake Oswego Parks and Recreation Department, talked through some issues with them in terms of Integrated Pest Management, and then we've looked to Metro as a resource also for the development of this. So one of the things we developed very early on were some goals for the plan. And these goals kind of reflect certainly the objectives that we feel are important in terms of utilizing the plan or having, you know, the information that, that was within the plan. Certainly the preservation of our natural system, we've placed a lot of emphasis, as you know, over the last few years. I'm sorry, I'm getting over a cold, so my, yeah. So pollinator health is really important and we wanted to make sure that, you know, that was something that the plan clearly called out. We want to emphasize certainly practices that minimize risk to human health. Thank you, sir. In terms of how we, how we select a practice and how we apply a practice at a specific time. And then we wanted to reduce and eliminate, as I mentioned, the use of chemical pest control treatments, not only in terms of what we're doing now, but as, as far as looking towards the future in terms of how those products are used. But we also have to look at the cost effectiveness of this plan in both the short and long term, in terms of man-hours, resources that we have to use. So, you know, as you know, looking at our budget, we have certain, you know, prescribed parameters in terms of what we can do as far as resources, so we have to be cognizant of that. And then one of the key features of the plan, which, this plan is really an adaptive management approach to doing things. So we do something, we learn from it, and then we go forward in terms of thinking, well, this is something that we would want to continue to do. So monitoring in that feedback loop that we have in terms of the plan is critically important in terms of sharing of information and checking in to see if this is, you know, a practice that we would want to use in the future. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Delora.
All right.
Thank goodness.
So the IPM is structured in such a way, we look at zone management and it's levels one through four. Level one is heavily used area that's highly visible, like athletic sports fields. Then you have level two, which is moderately used in some visibility that, you know, might be other parts of the park that are, are more, where people are wandering through. And then you have level three, now that's more lightly used and it may be visible, but more lightly used by humans, such as the islands in the, in the road. So hopefully people aren't wandering around in the islands. And then the level four, which is more, mostly a wild habitat, so the natural areas. So we look at each of these various levels of service and then we assign having to do with the type of pest and determining what is our tolerance level. And there's the action level threshold later that, that Todd will talk about related to that. So also in conjunction with that, so now those are the levels of service, but then we also break it out into the various management areas, such as the turf graph area, grass areas, which would be mostly around parks. Then we have the non-turf grass, the natural areas and playgrounds, dog parks, stormwater areas. We have our own facilities and then we also, the, the last management area we look at is aquatic areas, the, the wetlands, riverfront, and the docks area. So for the city, I mean, these are some of the, the amount of areas that we maintain throughout the city, so road landscaping that we maintain, this is just city maintain, it's about 23 acres. With our facilities, we have another 18 acres, stormwater, eight sidewalks and hard services, another eight green space and parks, 250 acres, and our building structures. And then to do all this work, we have 20 field staff out of Public Works and another six out of Parks to maintain all of that. So as Kerry had mentioned earlier, the various IPM practices, you look at the cultural, mechanical, and biological before you consider the chemical. And so in that context, the, the first line of defense is pest monitoring and pest control. So early detection and rapid response. So the sooner that we see it and the faster we can get on it, the, the better it is. As he mentioned, we have had used goats in the past and they're very effective in helping us remove invasive species. You definitely want to target the goats because they will eradicate anything and everything in their path. So then we also have bark dust around tree rings and medians because one of the key components is to avoid bare area, because when you have bare area, then the pests related to weeds are more likely to take hold. And we have in the past used weed burners where we, you know, fry the little weeds, especially in the sidewalk and hardscape area. We have done a tech demo of hot foam and steamer, that's another method that can be used to be, help eradicate weeds. Some other ones are mechanical removal. This is where the staff actually gets out with hose or shovels to, and/or hand pulling for those, and we do both internal and external crews to help us with that. Irrigation management is really important to, you know, the, the healthier the plant, the, the easier it is to ward off pests. And so this is where we can use our irrigation management and we can look at what is the weather, so we don't water overwater or we don't underwater. And then you have plant nutrition, making sure your plant is nice and healthy, and then tree management, you know, pruning as appropriate. And with that, I will turn it over to Todd to talk about action level thresholds.
Thanks, Laura.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. So I'm gonna jump right in unless there's any questions. Go ahead and get going. Delora mentioned the action thresholds, so this is some, this chart, in addition to the chart on the next page, it was, it's essentially the two same charts, but this is something that we sat around in the room with Delora, Kerry, myself, our, our field staff and tried to, it's, it's very hard to put a hard number on, on something that's so subjective, but tried to come up with these thresholds that essentially will trigger something beyond the routine cultural and mechanical practices that we're doing on So in, Delora mentioned all the zone management areas, we also categorize our pests, pests of public medical or health concerns, invasive pests, structural integrity pests, cosmetic nuisance pests are also here along this column here.
Question?
Yep.
So the, go to the next slide. So pests of medical or public health concern, are there mandates from the federal government or the state government that tell us in Wilsonville, we have to do some things to manage those medical concerns, those kinds of pests?
Yep.
Okay.
And for, for livestock as well.
Okay, and so that was...
And so that would also maybe mandate how we treat them? So this could be maybe not in our protocol, but if it's the federal government's, we do what they say then?
Yeah. So one, Tansy Ragward is a invasive species that is very deadly to animal, or cattle. And so we do have some property where we have had that. And so we need to go out, sure, make sure to eradicate it so it doesn't get over to the next property over.
Right, okay. Thank you. So for the city of Wilsonville, our thresholds will vary according to classification level of service. As I just indicated, it was very difficult coming up with those numbers. Those aren't numbers that we necessarily look at on a daily basis and say, okay, we're at 20%. We're looking to get to 25. We're constantly out there on a regular basis, our field staff, monitoring things and not necessarily thinking in numbers, so to speak. But if a pest is meeting, getting to that threshold that we determined for those respective sites. So with that, with that in mind, we came up with zero being a very strong. We don't necessarily hold ourselves accountable to a zero pest population in some instances. But there were instances, for example, the Tansy Ragward or something where we don't, that's just, we don't have a choice and zero is our goal. So low to moderate to things we just don't do anything about whatsoever. So as Delora and Carrie mentioned, chemical control products are certainly a piece in the toolbox of an intelligent plant management or integrated pest management plan. So with that being said, our IPM plan, with the work that we did prior with NCAP, we came up, was a very lengthy process as far as our chemical control products that we were actually using to come through and try to vet them and determine what was going to be on our list, so to speak. And then trying to stay in line with what the school district decided on when they had discussions about their IPM plan. Oregon State University has developed a low-impact pesticide or chemical control product list that we just decided would be better that we just adopt that as part of our plan. So one of your appendices, which is quite lengthy, is directly from the OSU low pesticide impact list that is vetted on an annual basis. And these are products that OSU has determined through various research and whatnot. They are to be used and only to be used on, in the school sites. So we figured if it was good for the, yes, ma'am?
Sorry. And I remember that in the packet saying that it, like, goes through an annual review. So will a new list be appended every year?
Yep, yep. And one thing that may not have been pointed out, that this IPM plan is truly intrinsic in nature. Every January, middle, it will get updated on an annual basis. So this really is, while we're bringing a plan to you, it's a draft and will be considered a draft in my book moving forward because we will be, in addition to updating the list, if we find something's not working, we can make those changes.
I have a question about that, too. Do you know if the OSU Extension Center on Miley Road is involved in formulating that list and updating that list as they do work with agriculture out there?
To be honest with you, just knowing what I know, working with Oregon State University and in their horticulture department, they're probably not directly linked, but they're certainly involved with it. They actually have an entirely, they have two full-time faculty dedicated to pretty much this list and the OSU IPM plans. But Extension folks, they're always talking and working on it.
Talking all the time, okay, thanks.
So is that list in this, in here somewhere?
Yep, it is one of the appendices in the, of the plan. So the plan itself, while pretty lengthy, is truly only about 20 pages long. And then the rest are appendices that we determined needed to be some way accessible, but not necessarily part of the plan if you just wanted to print off 20 pages of the plan. So while we do use chemical control products, we're quite selective in how and when we use them. Typically, and this is, we brought this same slide to you guys last time, so just a quick review. We typically do not broadcast any type of product, all three booms going on the sprayer at once type of thing, unless we're just doing a fertility application on our athletic fields. So typically just, if it's an undesirable plant and we're treating it, we're just pretty much treating the plants themselves. Time of year, time of year dictates the formula that we use, spring, fall. There's, there's a big difference in the chemistry and how it reacts within the environment and the plant. So as Carrie mentioned, we're always trying to keep taxpayers' money in mind and trying to balance the cost of what we're doing on a, on a routine basis. There are organic options available. We've in fact done some anecdotal research this past year. Efficiency is extremely limited. Going back and re-treating these areas is pretty costly when we know that there are other products that are effective or other methods. And then our, the products that we use, we typically try to find something that has a very low range on the label for percentage used per thousand square feet, a very low label rate. So we try to use the low use rate. We, we keep very little inventory on hand. We just don't use a whole lot of it. So when we do actually use product, we try to essentially just get what we're going to need and dispose of it. That's all covered in the plan, so. In addition to everything mentioned before, when we are actually applying it, and I should say this, this goes just for the parks. The roads folks may have a little bit different protocol. But we typically try to apply it very early in the morning when volatilization, environmental conditions are pretty much ideal for having ideal drying and translocation within the plant. And then just wanted to again mention, we have 16 certified through the state of Oregon public pesticide applicators on staff of those 26 that Delora mentioned in the previous slides. What that really means is that they have to initially take a test and pass a test through the Oregon Department of Agriculture. And then every year required, it's a, pretty much averages out to a 10-hour continuing education over five years. Our guys usually go, will see between 10 and 15 hours on an annual basis of ongoing training and requirements as well. So I kind of blew through those because I was hoping we'd just be able to answer any questions more than anything else.
So Councilor Lee Han, it was Appendix K. Has it?
So I tried to read most all of this, 100-plus pages. How many employees, current or future, are going to sit down and read 100-plus pages of protocols?
And I, I wouldn't necessarily call them protocols, but it's the first 20 pages that we were, will want to make sure that everyone's responsible for being comfortable with the content. But the appendices are more or less reference and.
Well, the 16 that are certified should know the rules already, right?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of the appendices are things that are even covered during that exam process and continuing education.
Plus you do training and you have a senior park and maintenance worker that oversees the work as well.
Why would the road folks have different protocols than the parks folks?
I don't think they do.
I, I wouldn't say that they do.
But they're, they're doing different kinds of applications, Mayor. So they're treating the mid, the islands and stuff, whereas.
So wouldn't an IPM cover protocols for all of those things?
It would, but there, there might be different application standards. There may be different training standards for the types of areas that you're treating. So for athletic field, it might be different than for what you're doing in an island.
The pesticide training does have different sections, if you will, of types of application.
So they're required to get a laws and safety license, and then they have, they have to get one more license after that. Our parks guys get an ornamental and herbic, or ornamental, and roads guys might get a right-of-way option.
Okay. I found this confusing in going through. I did not find a statement of policy clearly indicated about what our intent is as a city for use of chemicals versus other things. I did not find a policy where it said, we will do this and this and this first, or we will prioritize using. It seemed to have a lot of weight on how to use certain approaches. But it did not seem robust to me in giving a clear indication of what the city's policy intent is as to how to deal with integrated pest management. You have, you have one that's, you know, a definition. You got one that has goals. But even looking at the goals on 3.0, first one, preservative natural system, okay? Emphasize practices to minimize risk to human, okay? Reduce and eliminate where possible, chemical and pest control treatments. Well, if you get that far down in the list, then you say, oh, okay, they want to reduce and eliminate. But why wouldn't we have a easily understood English presentation saying, it is our intent to use the minimum amount of chemical controls that we can and to use natural approaches first or use mechanical, I mean, so that, there's a lot of controversy on this right now. And you know that all kinds of non-technical people are going to be reading this document.
So, so Mayor, under introduction, the second paragraph, you don't think that that hit, hit home what it is that we were trying to relay with this program, this document?
It did not feel to me like it stated the policy of the city as to how we will approach these problems. I would like to see a much more vernacular, clear statement of what our intent is.
I went looking for that, especially with chemicals, on pages 18 and 19. Because that's, I just went to the index and saw where it was. And to the mayor's point, we're, we're getting a fair amount of correspondence from people, most people that don't even live here, saying chemicals are bad, don't use them at all. And so there is no real communication as to at what point would you use chemicals because the result of not using them might be worse than if you, you know, did use them. There's nothing in here that kind of ties that together a little bit. So that, that might be a little bit helpful so that it could be articulated, hey, as a last resort, we may do this, and this is why. Because if we don't, then this is the alternative, so.
There's a lot of that in the objectives. So perhaps it would be useful to take a look at the objectives and see if we could, in the mayor's vernacular, change the vernacular a little bit so that we can make it clear that our goal is to use the least amount of pesticides as possible. Make that clear in the opening page of the document. So if that's the only thing people read, at least it's called out, I guess, more specifically than what you see in the document, Mayor? Is that what you're saying?
I think that would be a benefit, yes. Try to think about how citizens, now, yes, we've had contacts from a lot of people that don't live here, but there are a significant number of people that do live here that have expressed concerns about how we approach this. And I think it's incumbent on us to be clear on how, how we're approaching it. The threshold tables are so complex that very few laypeople, I think, will read through to the point that they say, oh, there's the product I'm concerned about. Oh, the threshold is this or that, or the situation where they might use. It, it's difficult to intuit, I guess I would say, that information from a, from a quick read or a.
Well, it's very specific in the plan what we will do. However, I think it could be more clear maybe in the introduction about what the overall intent is in a language that's more clear and explicit than maybe what you're thinking.
I think your slides here even were more clear than what I could see. And if you felt it was necessary to clarify that in order to communicate with us, then that to me says, you know, okay, it's also probably necessary to clarify it for communication with the public.
I could see two ways that we could address this also. You know, a lot of times, certainly within like master plans and plan documents, you have an executive summary. And the executive summary could pull together maybe a little more concisely, like the elements that are in the plan that work together in terms of defining that policy. Or we could also do just a separate pamphlet that would summarize, you know, the plan, something very readable, very accessible to the public.
I'm not sure those are mutually exclusive.
Oh, okay. We could do both. We could do both, yeah.
Okay. So I've gone down through this. How many are on here on this list of accepted, of low-impact accepted, whatever?
How many are?
On this list here?
Chemicals? That list is the low-impact list.
So it has a whole, whole bunch of them?
Forty pages? No.
It's quite lengthy, yeah.
So how would I know as a citizen which of these we, we use in the city of Wilsonville?
Well, I'd like to take a step back and just try to get some clarity for myself. Because when we put this plan together, I was under the assumption that this was an IPM plan for staff to be working with and not so much necessarily a, a public document. I understand it's out there now in the public, but.
It's a public document.
Not something that, that would be.
Wasn't written for public?
Wasn't written for public use, so to speak, so.
It guides how staff treats it, but the reality is we live in a, in a world where we don't care about it, so.
Okay. So if we want to try to clarify that.
And, and I have a lot of regard for a lot of people at Oregon State, but I know that the chemical people have a lot of input at Oregon State, too. And, and I see they took crossbow off as a, it's no longer a low-impact thing. But 24D and dicamba and a lot of other ones that have pretty bad things over here, bad outcomes, beware of the following, are still on the low-impact. So I can see where a person would be concerned, which of these do we use and how much do we use? And where do we use them in our LOS places? In other words, that's what's, what's missing in here in my mind is if you have an IPM that is supposed to be achieving the objectives that you said, reducing the need, right off the bat, we're going to reduce the need for chemical things, then the first thing I need to know is how many are we using? How many pounds of this stuff are we putting on every year? And is it going to be less next year and less the next year? Or is it going to be more, more, more? Because we're only being guided by, by those LOSs. And, and I don't know, you know, how would you know if you're being effective at reducing the objective, or meeting those objectives? If, if you're not monitoring it, I presume you are monitoring it. And because it seems like a good IPM is going to tell you how many pounds of each of these things you're using and, and how much it costs. Because that's, that's the other piece of it. And, and whether that is trending up or trending down, because that's our goal, is to trend it down with all these other things, irrigation and fertilizer and all those other management things, which, which over time are supposed to be trending down the need for, for chemical stuff. But it also seems like there should be a policy relative to these. If we're going to tell the public that we're okay with all, with this, you know, huge list of poisons, and we're not going to tell them where we use which ones. I mean, I guess we've said in level four, we don't use any, right? Unless, unless, unless it's a, an emergency situation like the knotweed situation.
Rapid response and.
So, so you, you put a caveat in there about that. But otherwise, none of these are used in level of four. And level one, we might use these, and two and three, we use these. But, but how does the public know in your IPM either how, what the intensity of use is on each of those LOSs or, or how much it is and how it's trending over time? That's, because I know that's, those are the questions I'm getting.
Sure, sure.
So we do track that information on an annual basis. And we have to report that information on an annual basis to the state, so.
So do we have goals in those? I mean, sure, we do have goals on the LOSs because you already said that we have goals on the LOSs, so.
And I guess, I mean, just one thing to keep in mind is as we can continue to grow, I mean, we increase the amount of area. And our, you know, the goal is trying to get us there, but it's, I would, I would be hard to say that we will definitively always reduce as you expand.
But we know, but we know how many acres. If we add, if we add another 10 acres, we might expect that it will go up by that percentage because we added this many more acres, 50 more acres. But I, I think people understand if you're only taking care of 10 acres or you're taking care of 1,000 acres, it's going to be different. But, and, and it depends on. And and it depends on what the LOS is for each of those, because some are much higher intensity. Depends on how many acres you got of. So so you gave us the acres we have by right-of-way buildings, et cetera, but not by LOSs, right? Or is that in here somewhere? How many acres of Level, Level of Service One?
It's not broken down to that level in this document.
Yeah. Because that would be good to know also. I presume the biggest one is LOS Four, right? Would be natural areas.
Riparian.
Riparian along the Willamette.
As far as our total acreage?
Total acreage.
Yeah.
Probably if you broke out how many acres in each of the LOSs, probably the biggest one is Four, where we theoretically have no chemicals unless it's an emergency situation. But it'd be good to know, you know, kind of where we are with the, what our goals are, at least. We could set goals on the other three LOSs. And I mean, and just try to be transparent, both in what our goals for usage are and how we're tracking them over time. Because I don't think the public scrutiny on this is going to be going down anytime soon. It's just going up.
And just one caveat with the natural areas would be some of the mitigation, wetland mitigation sites that we have for the various projects we've done, especially in the Coffee Lake wetlands. We have to meet certain objectives in terms of reducing, especially reed canary grass, in order to get our our restoration plantings established. So we do use, you know.
What do we use on reed canary grass?
We use glyphosate, Aquamaster.
In the water?
Yeah. It's an approved aquatic. It's the only way to, other than grading, to to try to control it enough to get the restoration plantings established. I mean, we do use a combination of shading, you know, inundation, and then at some point, those are our main tools.
Doesn't it doesn't it kill aquatic species, though?
Not. Aquamaster is specifically designed for, it's a version of glyphosate or that has glyphosate in it that's approved by by all the agencies, you know?
It's actually the terrestrial version of glyphosate roundup has a like a soap-type carrier. That's what's actually harmful to the amphibians, so the aquatic version doesn't have that carrier. The glyphosate itself is relatively harmless.
But that's the only instance where, you know, we have to specifically meet a permit requirement to meet our objectives for our five-year mitigation plan.
Okay. Well, I would sure like to know where we're where we're doing that.
So this is interesting.
I'd like to, if you don't mind, take a minute and just explain this, because I think it answers a lot of your questions here. So just within the last five years or so, the city has taken on Cartograph as its asset management system. Before that, Sarah Sands, Luke Bushman, who was here, also had a spreadsheet that all of the different departments would put their chemical applications into, and then he would track that and supply it to the, for the MPDS permit. As applicators, we're required by law to have at least some type of copy. We've decided to make it a hard copy, so we have a binder. So let's fast forward a couple of years. Cartograph from an asset management system isn't quite ready for our pesticide applications. So I spent a great deal of the last year of my life compiling every single application that we had on hard copy into this really cool spreadsheet that may or may not be the spreadsheet that we use throughout the city moving forward. But with that said, I have really, really good information on parks right here. So this is, for example, parks from the year 2013 through fiscal year ending to last June 30th. And these are products that since I've been here have have been used. So you'll see there's not many chemical products here that have been used period within the parks. Acela prin was used the month before I got here to treat the, some aphids over at Town Center Park, the trees. This is an insecticide, acela prin. Everything else is herbicides. So we've got the years going here. So what I want to point out is all the zeros, for one, of what we're not using. But more importantly, Council Leahan, this right here is glyphosate roundup, right? 2013. This is in gallons, so that's a little over a thousand ounces of product. We go by ounces per thousand square feet in most of our our measurements. We're down to, it's.
The other way.
Point, yeah, point, it's.
The point four six.
Yeah, point, point four six gallons, which is essentially, we sprayed about fifty-nine ounces, I think it was. And a lot of that is attributed to the knotweed that Kerry spoke of. So we've taken on a, we've invested a lot of interest in trying to figure out how we can, what you just mentioned, reduce our usage within the parks themselves, but throughout the entire city. But Kerry mentioned a lot of mechanical controls. A lot of our, we use, we bought some battery-powered equipment, so we're now string trimming a lot of our beds with battery-powered equipment, so we're not contributing to to air pollution, noise pollution, but also trying to keep weeds at bay. So this was something that I committed to early this year. You can see that we haven't, 2017, 18, as of last year, really just didn't spray anything. What I want to point out here is this is scythe, this is an organic herbicide, this is weed zap, this is an organic herbicide, hundred percent, zero percent effective in our in our trials with this weed zap right here. This right here, that's a little over two and a half gallons of scythe, which actually is not on the list because it has a warning label, so it's not on our list. We can't use that anymore. T-zone, ninety-nine percent of this application was in one application where we treated for our lesser salinide at Morosi Plaza back in in February or March. So little to know of this T-zone, which has, it's a combination product. Bamville, that's the dicamba that Council Leahan mentioned. That's very effective on just treating some of our clover. If we do have an issue where stinging pests are an issue, if we have to get out and treat something, that's our default use for clover. So I feel like we're really close to having what you're asking for from a numbers standpoint and being transparent about it, but I just feel like we need some more time internally to figure out how we're going to get all of our different departments onto the same page. And I think the IPM plan, while chemical control use is certainly a part of it, I don't want us to lose sight on how everything is intrinsically related and everything that we do on a daily basis is not, you know, it's not black and white, so to speak. Our chemical application numbers, that's really at a rate, maybe, you know, eight hours, sixteen hours' worth of a staff member's time, whereas they're spending forty hours a week, fifty-two, fifty-two weeks a year. So very minimal from that standpoint.
This is the sort of thing that I think the public would like to see. They would like to see it on especially more specific than parks, because playing fields are different than the river edge or whatever in in intensity. But but yeah, I think people like to see over time, are we are we getting better with all those other kinds of pest management strategies that we're using? If indeed the goal is to reduce the pesticide usage over time.
I'm kind of hearing two different issues here. I'm hearing there's an IPM that the staff uses, and then there's how we communicate that to the public. Is that fair?
Well, I think that that's true, but the public wants to be confident that whatever we're telling the public in fact reflects the other one accurately.
Well, the IPM is an accurate reflection of what we're doing. So the the issue that Council Leahan is raising, and I think rightfully so, is that people want to know over time, are we progressing toward our goal, which is to use less? And there's a way we can track that, communicate it, that's different than the actual IPM that the staff is trained to do.
And if that chart up there, that's that's the chemicals, those are the chemicals that we use now, at least in our parks?
That's what we have in inventory.
So, I mean, that's, this is a way bigger list.
The Oregon, yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't mean that we're using everything on that list. It just means that that's the list that's approved, and there may be an instance where you might need to use something from that, from that list, but the odds of that are pretty small, I would think.
And if you scroll through it, a number of the active ingredients on that list are the same. It's a lot of different products with different fragrance.
Right, right. But it seems like people might want to, we might want to flag the ones that we do use.
I think that's where it comes into what we could communicate to the public. Maybe every year, we could do an IPM report to the citizens on what we use in terms of chemicals, how much, and then maybe have like a five-year comparison. You already have the data for for the parks, at least. I think there's a way we can get to where we can communicate more effectively with our citizens and still have our staff document that our staff are using, are trained to, because the IPM plan is different than communicating to our citizens.
Right, but.
I mean, they're not going to look at the appendices and know exactly which chemicals we're using. So your point is well taken.
I know, I know.
Your point is well taken, so.
This would, this would terrify people.
If we were indeed using all those chemicals, they should be terrified, yes.
Right. We don't normally encode something that changes every year.
What do you mean?
We don't usually put a copy of it into our code if we expect it to change next year. We usually.
This is not code.
The plan will not be in the code?
No, it will not.
No.
It's an operating plan.
It's an operating plan for our staff. It's much like our public work standards.
So it still needs to be updated every year, then?
Right.
Sure. Yeah, as best man, best management practices change, as we determine whether or not something's effective, we we need to change our strategies.
Well, the other piece would be to incorporate it by reference and not try to reproduce the entire thing every year.
We're not going to reproduce anything. We have an IPM plan. There may be a section of that plan that might need to be updated. That will be done. So the plan is the plan. How we report that to our citizens is a different issue. I think what Council Leahan is saying is that we need to be clear what we're using, how much we're using, and then track that over time. That makes sense to me, and I think that's, we have a good story to tell in that regard, and we should be telling it.
All right. And so then we come back around to where I first started, which was some clear statement to the public of what our policy and intent is, which.
I totally agree, and I think what we need here is the IPM plan is is one aspect. We need something that we can report back to our citizens. So I'm, what I'm suggesting is here, maybe we do annually, do an IPM plan, report to the community, much like we do an annual report to our citizens on all the different services we provide. That is something we could include in our Bloomsbury Messenger. We could do a special section.
We could. The other piece that I found difficult to track was how we prioritize using mechanical means instead of chemical means. For instance, on Oriental Blackberry, I think it's found somewhere in there, that it says that you can mow it tight and frequently, and it will kill it eventually, or you can spray for it. How many times over, over what period of time would we commit to using mechanical means to try to kill it by applying the labor to mow it instead of saying that's too much work and just spraying it?
Well, as far as I know.
How are we making that judgment?
I'm not an expert on the, on the stuff you spray, but isn't crossbow the only thing that's effective on blackberries?
Pretty much.
And we don't use it, right?
No, we do majority, ninety-nine percent, mechanical.
Right, so so there's a trade-off, is what I'm saying, between paying for labor and using chemicals. And how are we, how does our plan guide us in making those judgments?
I think that goes back to best practices and available budget in terms of constraints, right? We can't use crossbow, so we're pretty much limited to the mechanical aspect unless you're using some other product to spray blackberries.
When we were building Vealbaw and we have the basins for stormwater detention, there was discussion specifically about the fact that we expected those basins to silt up and to acquire a lot of weeds. And how are we going to keep those basins functioning if that happens? And the discussion I recall was, we will just have to commit to paying the labor it takes to mechanically clear those out periodically. That's another example of of a policy judgment about whether we value not spraying more highly than minimizing parks' labor costs. If you're going to remove it mechanically, you have to be willing to absorb the labor cost.
Sure.
So that's a policy question. I don't feel like where you've got guidance.
Well, this isn't really a policy document. It's a, it's like public work standards. It's how we do things.
But it it should be up to council to come up with a policy that the operating agreement then is formed from. So if we need to pitch into something, then I think we should do that. I would also suggest, along those lines, that the group of you guys who had met, there probably should be either a community representative and or a city councillor, since they are a community representative, that's part of that group, to have input in that group as well. That's just my suggestion.
In what group? I'm sorry.
There was, they, together, a panel that came together and informed a lot of this.
Oh.
We have an IPM committee.
To develop the IPM committee. Got it, okay.
Which will, which will continue into the future, because we have to continually review the plan and look at where we're at with it.
Yeah, so we can certainly invite a citizen or an elected official onto that. I mean, if you're, if you're specifically talking about the policies that underwrite the IPM, that would make some sense to have somebody from council sit on that to give input.
All right, so we've had a fifty-minute discussion here. Do you think staff has a clear understanding of the concerns in a way that would enable you to bring back some recommendations on how to best address those?
Well, only if you agree with what I'm hearing here, which is that the IPM plan is for staff. How we communicate that to the community is a different story altogether, and I think there's a way we could do that. That doesn't mean that we need to change the IPM. I think the IPM is the IPM, unless there's some policies in there that you want to get into.
I think the public's going to be reading the IPM. They're not going to be.
We're going to be changing it every year, or we're going to be looking at, these products, just like crossbow's been struck. I don't see how bromethylene doesn't get struck soon also.
There's a good chance that the.
Rat killer. Which says this product is harmful if swallowed, and it's extremely toxic to mammals, birds, and fish, and it's on the low-impact list?
Well, it's on the OSU low-impact list.
Well, I know, but.
But the intent is, as Todd had mentioned, is that we will be revisiting this document on a regular basis, because this is basically a standard operating procedure for us.
Right, yeah.
It's an operating document. And if we come across a method that is just not working, then, you know, we make note of it as we go forward, and we find chemicals are no longer on the list, we get rid of those. So it's it's ever-evolving as to what it is. It's a guideline for staff to help them be better focused. But the information that we would share, kind of back to your comment of like, where do we use it and how much do we use in all? I definitely see that in an annual report that we would put together, so people could better understand. And then at that time, we could pull out from the the long list, what are the actual chemicals that we use?
That we use, because I.
And and I think it would.
Bunches of these, I don't think.
Well, I think a way to get at that might be to say, here, here are the chemicals that we typically use.
Yes.
That doesn't preclude you from using another chemical that's on that low-impact list. Another way to get at this is just to remove that from the appendices. Do we need to have the OSU list in there if it's going to cause undue alarm?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm asking the question because I don't know how important that is to our IPM.
I mean, we're going to reference back to that, whether it's in the document or not. We just included it so people could see.
So maybe, maybe as a header to that, appendices, you can say, even though this list is approved by OSU, doesn't mean that the City of Wilsonville endorses the use of these chemicals. There's a way to leave it in the plan, but to make sure that people understand that we don't use everything on there.
Right.
And here are the typical list of chemicals we use and and why we use them and how we use them.
And and I would suggest that if we're going to do an annual IPM update, that we include the information more than just chemicals, so people understand how much time and effort and funds that we are spending.
Man-hours.
Culture of biology.
Person-hours, sorry.
As well as the.
Practices.
Yeah, the chemicals.
I caught myself. I have a daughter.
We have Cartograph, our asset management with Work Order, so we should be able to track that, whether we do it or we're hiring a contractor to do it.
Yeah, Cartograph is going to be the key to tying a lot of this together from a tracking standpoint. This is our first real season of actually implementing Cartograph within parks, but other guys have been using it for a few years.
Now, I have a, another question that isn't really about this, but perhaps you know, since you you use string trimmers, where's the string go?
Well, so the string itself, we have self, self-eater heads, or it's basically, we cut a string like that for two pieces.
Right.
Obviously, yeah, the string does eventually wear down.
Where does it go?
But it's, no, the same place a lot of things go.
The ground.
Into the ground.
Has it turned color?
Because we use miles and miles and miles of weed eater string, whatever you want to call it, that just evaporate into the air and plastic.
We've actually got some pretty good string that they can pretty much go quite a while on. on twenty-four inches of string.
Rather robust, right?
I'm just saying, I, I follow after a bunch of landscapers, and I'm always picking up the end pieces because they're going through spools. Yeah, they're everywhere. So those, and those end pieces are bad enough, but you can at least pick them up. The rest of the half a mile of spool has evaporated or vaporized into the air or into such tiny pieces that that's a lot of plastic we're.
Yeah, we don't use those, use that.
Use those blade things?
No, the, the string we use is a much heavier gauge, and the stuff you're talking about is pretty much straight poly, straight plastic, whereas this stuff actually has some metal and it's.
Like it has metal in it?
It's, it's pretty, yeah, it's a pretty beefy string. But I, I'll tell you what, if you ever see a chunk in the park.
So where'd the metal go?
If you see a chunk in the park, let me know.
You breathe the metal, like.
If, if our people see it, they'll pick it up and throw it away.
Yeah, I don't, hopefully you won't ever find any chunks.
So Mr. Cosgrove, where are we?
I, I think I tried to explain where I thought we were going. I think we can make the adjustments that we talked about, if that sounds okay, and I think we can do an annual report to the community.
Policy statements somewhere?
If you, if you want to have a policy statement from the city council on the front page, we can absolutely do that. I can work with Barbara, and we can draft up something with these folks and.
Yeah, and I, and I think part of that should be, should be a, a, a more detailed description of the level of service places, that this is what we do. These are our standards for level of service one, for two.
I kind of like Carrie's idea of doing an executive summary that has the council policy statement, and then breaking out what you talked about, and then, and then talking about the annual report to the community.
And some approximation of how many acres we have that we would call level of service one versus level of service four.
Sure, never. We can do that.
We could easily do a preamble page that explains, explains it, and I think that would get to a lot of what your concerns are, and then also work on the list, just to explain better what the list is, not that that's everything that, that we use, all of those things.
And, yeah, we can put a disclaimer on the OSU list, so that people.
It seems like we ought to have a list of the things that we routinely.
We can highlight the chemicals that we used.
Well, but you don't want to have to thumb through twenty pages in order to pick out ten things.
Sure, we can do that. I think we can do that in the preface to that appendices.
Something, something like that.
Here's the list of the chemicals we used in the last fiscal year.
And that's part of our annual update.
Sure.
Yeah, something like that, you know, instead of trying to make people plow through all that. Okay, why don't we move along, and I'll only ask.
Should Counselor Lehan be the designated councilperson to help with?
If she wants to help us write the preamble, we could use any help she's willing to provide. We'll, we'll triple her salary.
So, so I'll offer to take a first shot and then share it with you, and then you'll give me some good feedback, because I know you've got a lot going on.
You can be our editor, how's that?
I'll take the first shot with, with the support from these.
Sure.
Okay, all right, let's do that. Thank you all for the, the work and the, the considerate dialogue. Appreciate it.
Sure.
And I'll just add this aside. I heard somebody once ask, whatever happened to all the rubber that wore off tires since we started driving cars?
It's a good question.
Weird does it go.
Water treatment plant, river access. That looks like a handout we have in front of us here.
Yep.
Tickle your other mic if you're going to use it over there.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp.
Your other mic.
And members of council. My name's Zach Weigl, I'm the Capital Projects Engineering Manager, and with me is Nancy Crashour, Community Development Director, and Mike McCarty, Parks Director. And so as Willamette Water Supply is moving, moving ahead with their design for the raw water intake facility at the water treatment plant, we've had, we have a few updates to, to share with you and to get your feedback on, and, well, that drawing is really hard to see on this, on this picture.
Can you make it bigger?
Yeah. All right, so, this, so the first topic is the location of the sixty-six inch water pipe, water pipe through the water treatment plant park, and you can kind of see it on there, it's the, the two solid lines next to the yellow area right in here. So you can follow the, the pipeline alignment out to the upper treatment plant site. The, the lot, the line out here is the, represents the impact area for construction, and then also kind of on the edge of that yellow area is the other, other side. So the line is being proposed through the park, and there, there's, we're still working through the, the final location of that pipeline, but we're really trying to balance how close we are to that tree line that's along the edge of that channel and the permanent impact that, that would have to the, to the, to the grassy area in the park. So we are shifting that line as close to the, to that tree canopy as we can without impacting the trees.
I, I don't intuit where the tree canopy is.
So it's hard.
To, to the south or to?
Yes, to the south. So the, Willamette River is on the right side of the page, and then the, the, this is that stream, the.
The blue.
The blue is the yellow, or the blue is the stream in that area, and then the slope is really in that, in that red-orange area.
And it's fairly steep.
And it's pretty steep. So the trees go right up to the edge of that red area.
Right, so you're trying to get it close to that edge, which is furthest away from the surface water stream and the open grass as possible?
Right.
Yeah, and, and initial proposal was to put it closer to the edge of the bank, to stay out of the park, or stay further out of the park, and we determined that, A, the trees would have to go, B, they would have to significantly stabilize that slope to be putting this big, huge pipe in it. And while we could require them to do that, it would cost them a lot of money, we saw that the la, the loss of riparian habitat was significant, and we didn't want to lose the existing trees out there and slope, the stable slope that's there. We do have several locations of experience where we know we have to be very protective of these channels. I'm thinking of Moore's Landing and River Green where we.
Spent a lot of money making.
Counselor Starry members that really well.
Three times around.
And so we felt like it's important to protect the slope. Slops are going to continue to move over millions of years, but we felt like to, there are ways to sustain them, and one is to not disturb them at all. The other thing is, the trees also provide a nice buffer between the plant, the park, the new pipeline, and the neighborhood to the west. So that's something we figured into as well. And since we're moving it a little bit into the park, this will be like, kind of on the east side of the trail down there, we really wanted to check in with the council to make sure that you realize that this will be here forever, and they don't want to put a lot of stuff on top of that pipe. So if you had plans for the park, wanted to be using that space, we'd want to be aware of that, and I know we can't guess what somebody wants to do in fifty years. But I feel like it's a, it's a group, kind of, we need to all discuss it.
So what are you proposing be on top of the pipe?
Well, I think.
Grass?
I think what you're precluding is like, the city selling that property in the future and putting condos on it or restaurants, which I wouldn't want to be on the city council or be the city manager proposing commercial development next to that neighborhood in the future, but.
But it is valuable riverfront property.
Yeah, that's the point.
You wouldn't be putting any buildings on top of that, and the question that they're still researching is what kind of landscaping could even go over that? Obviously, grass can go over it, but trees, unlikely.
Asphalt path?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you could do a path.
Well, there's, it's going to go next to the existing path, so you probably want a path next to it now, but.
And apparently, a street on top of it, too.
Yeah, you could put a street on it.
Yeah.
But the path that they do, they, they're going to disturb a fair amount of the park when they put this pipe in, and there'd be a lot of heavy construction equipment in there. But they are committed to putting the land back as it was or better, and if they, they're pretty much planning on, they're, they're going to impact existing path, and they'll replace, replace it. And if they, there's areas that have been preserved, they, we won't require them to replace it, but they like, they, I think they see the path as being, the whole thing is going to have to be replaced, but.
Well, if the whole thing's going to be replaced, would it make more sense to put it on the pipe?
Well, it would make repairing the, the pipe more expensive if you, you know, deliberately.
But not much.
Right, but it would, it would be a cost.
I think you want, do you want to, it gets into the layout of the park, and this is what Mike can talk to better than me probably, but do you want to move the path further into the park or leave it on the edge?
Then you're more, then you're more in the middle of the park, taking away the grass area if you move it into the park. I think leaving it where it is makes sense, and as far as we're concerned right now, and again, fifty years, who knows, but we're thinking just turf is going to be there.
Wait, 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 hold on. Why were we thinking it was going to be just turf?
One, it's the way it is right now, and we don't see like a, a playground or any kind of equipment being there, or a shelter, or anything like that.
Well, it would seem to me that then, having had this discussion just recently, that we want, might want something less intensively needing of care and pesticides than turf. Now, when we had Floyd, remember, he, he did a number of natural grass things that were designed to be mowed only infrequently, you know, four or five times a year as opposed to every week, and, and they had a variety of plants in them. This is not a place we need to worry about bees, so we might as well have a mix of clover and little flowers and stuff like that. I mean, I, it should be, it should be a native, short-growing, grassy, grass seeds in there also, but it should be a mix, which is what he had planted in a bunch of areas that were not playing fields, the side of hills and stuff like that. Anyway, that, it's an opportunity to do something that is less, requires less inputs than standard turf. That's all I'm saying, not that it wouldn't still be kind of grassy.
It might be something we want to check in with the neighborhood on, because I know they use that part quite frequently. In terms of what, they have an established expectation in terms of what we put in there when we built that water plant, but I think the point is, the point is well taken.
It's still, it's still short-growing.
Sure, yeah.
Stuff, but, but we don't care if it grows dandelions and stuff like that, because why would we?
The neighbors might.
We don't, but the neighbors might. That's the, I'm only suggesting maybe we want to check in with them.
Yeah, we can look at all those options, and like you said, talk to the neighbors, see what happens.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, they have wildflower.
Yeah, wildflower mix. Is this something we need to decide right away?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so we have some time to check in with folks and maybe do some different renderings of what that might look like?
I don't think we were planning to really landscape the park with the, talking about the pipe tonight. What we were wanting to make sure that the real estate that will be used by the pipeline is acceptable to the city council.
That's the big question.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I, and I think, I think that looks, looks good and where you have it. The only reason I brought it up is, is on the heels of this discussion we just had, we shouldn't just go pell-mell, assuming that when we have an opportunity, when we're going to tear it all up anyway, that, that we wouldn't ask the question, would we put in a high maintenance ground cover there if we don't need to?
I just have one question, and I'm not an engineer, but I'm just looking at this. That's a pretty harsh angle, right at the bottom before it starts going north. So is that too strong of an angle that could wear the pipe thinner there, or should we make it more rounded? Or does it even matter? I don't know, I'm just.
So they're, so they're limited by the existing, there's a, in the underground storage facility right next to the treatment plant, where, right where it says, right where the words "raw water pump station" is, so they have to.
It's our clearwell.
Yeah, the clearwell, and it has, they have to stay twenty-five feet.
They have to stay clear of the clearwell.
Yeah, they have to stay twenty-five feet away from that, so it's.
And I, I think this is not a final design, Counselor Star, yes.
Yep, that's where it is, yep.
The clearwell is.
But they'll be, they might, they might be a flatter curve.
Right.
It's approximate, and I do know, I don't, I've never been involved with this large of a diameter water pipe, but with smaller ductile iron pipes, you can take pretty severe angles, and it's pressurized so that it's, and you put on restraint joints and things like that to keep it from pushing against the side of the, the back pillars and stuff like that.
I just see the most intense pressure being as close to there as possible, and here we have a bend, so.
Okay. Yeah, it's all welded steel pipe, so, yeah.
Long sweep ninety instead of a tight ninety.
It's not coming apart.
Right, the designers will be looking at that, and they are experienced in large diameter pipe, and we also, the, the length of the sticks of pipe might affect how this actually ends up getting laid out, too.
This is, what's the diameter of this pipe?
Sixty-six inch.
Okay, and?
And then, did you want to talk about the trail?
So the second item is on the next page, and this is kind of the reverse, reverse direction. The river is down at the bottom of the page, and this is the treatment plant up here with the new addition shown there. What I, why I included this is, is it shows kind of the seismic improvements that are being planned for, in front of the treatment plant, and basically, there's a need to construct a, a wall, jet, what they call a jet grout block in front, in front of the treatment plant to keep that from sliding into the river during a major earthquake. And then there's also a pile wall that's shown here in the, in this dark line that basically drive piles into the ground, and it creates a wall to, to keep that from sliding also. So as part of this work, they'll be using an existing access that comes from the neighboring property to build that wall, and that presents an opportunity to build, to, once they restore this area, to create a trail down there along the river, and also look at providing river access. There's a, there's a kind of a flat bench down at the bottom near the water at this location, so one of the things that Willamette Water Supply has approached us with is the, is the idea of creating a, a trail when they restore this area, and possibly looking at access down to the water as part of the project, so.
That's good. Who, who was going to do that?
The, the program.
And we've asked them that if they can design it, if they can get the final grades to include this, we would very much like that, but again, we wanted to check in with the council, because these are discussions we've been having.
Could you show me where it, how you drop into it and then back out again off the bank?
My understanding is that the, the existing, there's an existing roadway that's probably grown over now, but that comes down from this side and comes in at an angle through here, and they, they'll need to get equipment down there to drive these piles, so.
Anyways?
Anyway, so.
And it might end up being someplace else to, we're not sure, which is kind of where they could design it into the site.
So is that access coming off the concrete plant property?
That's why we wanted it to be accessible from the city's property.
Right.
So would it dead-end, or is, would it loop back up on, on, on the other side? Or was it, would it just dead-end and you go back up the same way?
That's something that we'll have to work out with them, but, to see where those connections could happen, but the intent would be to connect to that existing trail on the west side of the, of the park, yeah.
That would be so great.
And then there's also, in the regional trail plan, it's not in our transportation system plan at this time, but there's also a future Willamette River Trail, and they've asked whether or not we want them to include that, and it's, just would be one little segment, which, you know, we could say no, because who knows if it'll ever be built, but we've said, yeah, try to fit that in, because you never know if it might get built one day, or it might, you know, so.
Well, it's a start, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, so, but again, if you think that's, we wanted to kind of check in with the council on that as well.
Yeah, yes, Wilsonville Concrete is, is part of that plan, too, and whether or not that'll ever happen. ever happen.
They will let us.
Forever, never, you know.
Never know.
Never know a competition.
But if you don't, if you don't start somewhere.
Yeah, this could be a gap someday.
It gets the hook.
They have a beach and a dock.
Does that all sound reasonable?
When's this anticipated to start?
What was the schedule for the?
I think it was 2022. This one construction was.
2021.
2021.
And then like how long might it take?
So the, it's going to be in two phases. And the first phase is all the underground work and all the buildings. And that's going to take two years, two years. And then all the mechanical equipment will happen.
Two more years.
Two more years after that.
So how, in the, this park area would basically kind of not be usable as a park area for the entire.
Right. We've, we've had discussions about keeping the trail on the east side of the property that's along the building open during construction. But yeah, the rest of the park will have to be closed for about two years.
We've had meetings with the neighborhood, so they're well aware of the construction activities.
All right, thank you much. Anything else, Mr. Cosgrove?
That's it for work session.
All right.
Oh, Mark, you want to say something? We could talk a little bit about the E-Board hearing for the Aurora Airport if you'd like, just to.
Is 15 minutes enough or not?
Well, we could just prep it for, for the regular session if you want. I could give a, I could give a little background so that when you're seeing the video, you're not seeing it cold.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
So, and Mark, you might want to, because Mr. Leo was there too. So Greg, if you want to come up, there was a hearing, I think it was a legislative panel hearing, and there were some assertions made by.
Yes, Mark Ottned, Public Government Affairs Director.
Greg Leo, Public Affairs Consultant, Leo Company.
And Greg was at the hearing. I watched the video today. There was something that was said that I felt like this council needed to be aware of, and I'm recommending that you have our city attorney draft a letter in response to that. But the kind of.
To kind of maybe tee things up, initially the mayor and Clackamas County Chair Jim Bernard appeared before the E-Board Subcommittee on September 24th to present the county and the city's position. In essence, when we presented, we asked to have the $37 million runway extension withdrawn. We asked to have inclusive intergovernmental agreement with the local and state agencies be developed so that we have a method of communication, exchanging information, and to develop a new state airport master plan that complies with state law. The, the whole E-Board took the matter up under consideration on September 26th and referred it to Oregon Solutions, which is a PSU dispute resolution center for a public process, and to report back to the legislature by December 10th. During the course of that meeting on September, on September 26th, as the city manager alluded, there were certain incorrect statements made about Wilsonville, our public process, the area geology, and the lack of impact to Wilsonville and Clackamas County. We have that teed up here on the video if you do want to watch that.
Well, we can watch it now, or that could be teed up for regular session under city attorney's presentation. I'm not sure you're going to have enough time.
I would recommend waiting because then we'll have it during the regular session and if there's people downstairs to comment on that.
So it's a little bit of a teaser for you.
We don't want to make them wait.
And Mr. Leo, I'm not, I'm not expecting you to stick around for the whole thing. Is there anything that you'd like to add? Because we do have eight minutes.
Well, it really, in a way, was good news. It was a tough hearing, one of the tougher ones probably in recent memory. But the good news is there is a period of time now where this coordination between Department of Aviation and the local governments can occur and then be brought back to the December E-Board meeting. So I think that's good. I think that recognizes that there's a need for communication and an opportunity probably to tell our point of view.
I did watch the hearing and I was surprised that there didn't, there didn't seem to be a lot of folks advocating for our position because I think there was a lot of misinformation presented at that hearing. Is that a fair?
That is exactly right. Yes.
So what we testified was not just to withdraw the application for the 37 million, but we testified we thought it was premature in the absence of this bigger intergovernmental agreement and a master plan that respected the public process that is supposed to happen. The financial people at the state are very much concerned about walking away from money that might be available with no match. But they, the aviation department people conceded, admitted, noted, whatever it was, that they don't have any master plan that includes all the airports in the state. They didn't know if there might be other airports than Aurora that might be in need of those funds that might be appropriate for that application. They really were quite short of information and I think some of the legislators noted that. We asked for, I guess, more process to figure those things out. And the committee's take was to do this public process through Oregon Solutions at Portland State. They've also stated that they don't expect a resolution out of that process. They expect to try to improve the dialogue and let people be heard and try to find some way forward because the subcommittee has already stated that they think it needs to go forward.
I think that's accurate. I also think that there are several folks on the committee that think that this is a NBE issued by Clackamas County and Wilsonville.
That was stated.
And I don't think they are seeing the whole picture in terms of the amount of infrastructure that would be required. I know that ODOT's concerns were not part of that discussion as well.
That's one of our contentions is that it affects the surface transportation in many ways and they're not really talking about that.
But more of a beginning point of our pushback was just the lack of dialogue at all, process.
A lack of an open and transparent process.
And if you kind of work your way back up the chain, is our issue as a city and county more with the state of Oregon? Or is the federal aviation administration also playing a part of this?
Well, the feds have money.
Yeah, the feds have money, but it's more.
Well, it's the money that we would get.
It's more the state Department of Aviation that really has pushed forward without paying much attention to the process or the impacts that would, would occur outside of just the airport.
And I think that's what the Oregon Solutions will attempt to get at, is to kind of highlight what the big issues are. At least that's what we will be trying to do. My concern and why I wanted this put on the agenda tonight is because one of the assertions that was made was completely false and did not put the city council, the city attorney, or the city manager in terms of how we do business in a good light.
So we'll see that on the video and then we can talk about that and how the council would like us to respond.
Or if you would like us to respond.
This has been going on for a few years. They have, they have not been speaking well of us.
Right. Well, this, this is not something I would expect a state legislator to say in a public testimony. What you say offline is one thing, but.
No, no, this is in, this is in public testimony.
Well, you'll be amused anyway.
Well, then maybe you won't be surprised.
Well, and I would just like to say for the record, I never have elbowed my way to a table. I'm always very polite about it.
Excuse me, can I sit down?
And the state agency that we're on the side of, I think, or would like, I'd like to think we're on the same side with is ODOT.
Right.
Because of the concern about the bridge.
They were not part of the testimony.
Larger conversation would bring that in.
They're hiding under a rock, but it's their freeway.
All right, so there you go. That's your teaser.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And we'll call adjournment at 6:53 then for work session and reconvene downstairs.